We will call this public meeting to order. We will begin with roll call, and I would declare that all councillors are present, with the exception of councillor Emily Lutes, who is in the air somewheres and may be joining us virtually. And unfortunately councillor Hiltz is home ill. So everyone else is present. I note that the Municipal Government Act deems that council members not in attendance at a public hearing are ineligible to vote on the issue at the related upcoming council meeting. In a public hearing, the council's role is to hear the staff presentation, as well as comments from the public on the file and information as presented. There will be no debate. However, any members of council may ask questions of clarification to either the staff or the public. The first item of business this evening is an application to rezone property 836 Main Street, Kingston. Perry Bowman, our municipal planner, will be presenting. Ms Bowman, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and good evening, everyone. So yes, as Mr Mayor said in our introduction this evening, we are here to discuss an application for a land use bylaw map amendment, or rezoning application, at 836 Main Street in Kingston. Sorry. So up until this point, this is the land use bylaw map amendment process that we've undertaken. We received a completed application on the 10th of February in 2025. A public information meeting was not required for this application, so we proceeded straight through to the staff review. This included sending the application to other bodies of jurisdiction and consulting with the village of Kingston. Following that review, a recommendation was presented to the planning advisory committee on the 22nd of May, and a recommendation was forwarded to the full municipal council at first reading on June 3rd, where a public hearing was authorized. So prior to this evening's meeting, properties within 500 feet of the subject site were notified again. And following this evening's public hearing, we will proceed through to second reading, where the full municipal council will vote to make a decision on the application. And following that decision, there is a 14-day appeal period. So in respect to the proposal, the applicants have applied to rezone the subject property from the general commercial C1 zone to the mixed commercial residential C3 zone to permit the development of two four-unit dwellings. I will note that as part of this process, I am not, well, council is not giving consent for development. There are several other permitting processes that need to occur before any form of development can occur. But as part of this, we do need to consider land use conflicts, which is why we ask for a proposal in terms of what they are looking to use the land for. And in this case, it is two four-unit dwellings for a total of eight residential units. So this is a map of the County of Kings, with the red circle indicating the approximate location of the subject site within the village of Kingston, which is again 836 Main Street. So this is an aerial image of the subject site, which is outlined in red. The subject site has an area of 27,555 square feet, and is located on the southern side of Main Street, with approximately 80 feet of street frontage. There is a dwelling currently located on the site, which is proposed to be demolished if this application is successful. Historically, there was also a second dwelling on the site, which is why we have two separate driveways on the subject site. The subject site also backs onto the Kingston Rail Trail, and the land further to the south of the rail trail is intended for future planned neighbourhood development. To the east, we have residential dwellings. To the west, we have the Freeman Auto Sales and the Esso Gas Station, and then Tim Hortons further along. And then to the north, we have residential dwellings and the Aurora Inn. So this is a zoning map of the subject site. The subject site is located in the general commercial C1 zone, and the land to the west and north is also located in the general commercial zone. The land to the east is located in the residential one- and two-unit zone, which is this lighter pink colour. And then to the south, we have the comprehensive neighbourhood development R5 zone. So this is the future land use designation map. So as we can see, the site and the lands to the north and west are located in the commercial designations, whereas the land to the east and south is located in the residential designation, which is the yellow colour. So the designation identifies what the land can be used for, and if proposes, sorry, if changes are proposed to be made, what those changes can be. So Municipal Planning Strategy Policy 3.2.2 states that all commercial zones are permitted within the commercial designation, meaning the municipal planning strategy does not prohibit the rezoning of the land from the general commercial C1 zone to the mixed commercial residential C3 zone if all other policy components are met. And this is a hypothetical map showing what the zoning of the area would look like if this application is approved in its current form, showing this subject site as the C3 zone in green. So this is an image of the subject site, looking at it, or looking south from Main Street. Obviously, it was a slightly different climate at the time photos were taken, but we can see one of the driveways here, and the secondary driveway would be here. So this is taken from the Kingston Rail Trail, looking up the site towards Main Street, with the dwelling in the picture. And here we have the Kingston Rail Trail and the rear of the neighbouring residential properties to the east. And this is, I guess, looking from Main Street at the residential properties to the east of the subject site, looking north, but also to the east, looking along Main Street at the residential properties. So this is looking to the west of the subject site, where we have the Freeman Auto Sales, the Esso, and then the Tim Hortons. And then this is looking directly across the road from the subject site, where we have the Aurora Inn. So in terms of public consultation, once we received the application, 29 property owners within 500 feet were notified of the application via letter mail, as a public information meeting was not required, because the subject site is less than an acre in area. One phone call was received regarding the application, and that was actually in regards to the public hearing notification letters going out, and it was from the base, well, sorry, the Armed Forces Base. And it was more of a notification than anything, and that they may potentially be considering a new entry to the base in the vicinity of the subject site in the area, but nothing is confirmed. So they were more of letting us know as an FYI in that respect, but no calls of concern were raised in regards to this application. So the application was presented to the Kingston Village Commission, and that was at their village commission date on May 14th. Questions were asked, no concerns were raised, and generally comments were positive in nature. The only question that wasn't necessarily a concern, but was queried, was in respect to stormwater drainage and how that would be managed on the site. So through the staff assessment process, the application was sent to the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works and the municipality's Department of Engineering and Public Works. Both of those parties came back advising that, at the point of permitting, they would be requesting additional information in regards to stormwater drainage, so that would be dealt with at that point in time. Okay, so moving on to policy, municipal council, sorry, Municipal Planning Strategy Policy 5.3.3 states that council shall consider amendments to any one of the zoning maps of the land use bylaw, provided the application is for a specific development. So in this case, we've been advised that it's for two four-unit dwellings. And point A is to rezone land to another zone enabled within the same designation. So as we saw through our future land use map slide, the site is located in the commercial designation, and the commercial designation permits both the existing zone and the proposed zone. Further to that, Municipal Planning Strategy Policy 5.3.5 states that council shall consider in relation to all applications to rezone land, point A, the applicable zone placement policies; point B, the impact of both the specific development proposal and of other possible uses permitted in the proposed zone; and point C, the general criteria for amending the land use bylaw set out in section 5.3 Development Agreements and Amending the Land Use bylaw. So in regards to point A of the previous slide, we're going to be looking at the zone placement policy. So for the mixed commercial residential C3 zone, the zone placement policy is lands located in this zone are intended to complement established commercial areas. These areas shall generally be located on main transportation corridors and associated side streets that have, sorry, that have commercial development, traditional main street areas within commercial areas that have not yet experienced much development, or areas where flexibility between residential and commercial uses is desired, and to permit both residential and lower-impact commercial uses, such as local retail business offices, in the same area, sorry, in the same area of a growth centre. So this is a map of the subject, well, the zoning in and around the subject site. So the subject site is located on Main Street, which is a main transportation corridor, and directly abuts the residential one- and two-unit zone, which is this, I guess, buffer area here. The subject site sits on the border of the transition from residential uses to the central business area of Kingston. So the intersection of Main Street and Maple Avenue, sorry, and Maple Street is the first cluster of commercial uses you see when travelling west on Main Street into Kingston. With the zoning transitioning back into the mixed commercial residential C3 zone to the west of that commercial pocket, so we've got the mixed commercial residential here, before it transitions sent further into the central business zone of Kingston. So placing the mixed commercial residential C3 zone on the subject site would offer flexibility by permitting both residential and commercial uses. Staff consider the zone placement ideal as it would acknowledge the existing residential uses while maintaining commercial provisions in the long term, and offer opportunities for lower-impact commercial uses while providing a buffer between existing commercial and residential properties. So this is our comparison slide, where we're going to be looking at what is currently permitted under the C1 zone versus what is permitted in the mixed commercial residential zone. The general commercial zone is considered a higher-intensity zone, where uses permitted are considered to have the potential for a higher impact in comparison to mixed commercial residential. So in proposing the change in zone, we lose the ability to use the land for orange, but we gain the ability to use the land for yellow. So we lose the ability to use the subject site for agricultural equipment parts, sorry, and part sales and services, agriculture-related industry, automotive repair, automotive sales and rental, building and construction contractors, bus/taxi stations, car wash facilities, drive-through restaurants, dry cleaning facilities, emergency services, food and drink production, gas bars, heavy equipment facilities, licensed liquor establishments, manufacturing, outdoor commercial display, parking lots, professional trades, storefront recycling uses. But we gain the ability to use the land for group dwellings, multi-unit dwellings, one-unit dwellings, residential facilities, semi-detached dwellings, townhouses, and two-unit dwellings. And then moving on to part C of the last piece of policy we looked at, which asked us to consider Municipal Planning Strategy Policy 5.3.7 and the general criteria, we need to consider the points on the screen, noting that the municipality is not always the body with jurisdiction over certain considerations. So in those cases, we have referred the application out for comment, and we take those comments into consideration. So the proposal is considered to meet the intent of the municipal planning strategy and does not conflict with any of the municipal or provincial programmes, bylaws, or regulations, and is not seen to have any financial impact on the municipality. In terms of land use, oh, sorry, compatibility, the land uses directly to the east and further to the west beyond the commercial designation are residential. The uses directly to the west, as in right next door, are commercial in nature. The land use to the north is commercial but provides accommodation to the travelling public, and then the land to the south is for large-scale residential units in the future, in a planned form. So the proposed residential units, generally speaking, will not conflict with any of the existing residential or commercial businesses on neighbouring properties. The mixed commercial residential C3 zone permits lower-impact commercial uses than the general commercial zone, and will therefore has less of an impact on neighbouring residential uses and less of an impact on existing commercial uses in the area. So in terms of the creation of traffic hazards or congestion, the application was referred to the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works, and they did not see any cause for concern in regards to traffic hazards or congestion as a result of this proposal. Similarly, the application was referred to the Kingston Fire Chief in regards to fire protection services and equipment, and the fire chief confirmed that there is adequate facilities and equipment available to service the site. In terms of sewer and water, the authority of sewer is the village of Kingston, so the application was referred to the village of Kingston, and they advised that there was adequate capacity to service the site. And any future well water will need to be in accordance with the regulations of the Nova Scotia Department of Environment. In regards to the potential for flooding or serious drainage problems, both, as stated before, the application was referred to both the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works and council's Department of Engineering and Public Works, who advised that in future they would be requesting drainage plans. The Department of Engineering and Public Works did note that there is no current known cause for concern for drainage, but due to neighbouring properties experiencing drainage issues in recent years, they will be looking at how that's managed in the future. In terms of negative impacts on wellfields, bear with me one moment. The subject site is not in or within any wellfield areas. The application is not expected to have any impact on neighbouring farming operations, as there is none in the direct vicinity of the subject site, and the site is considered suitable in terms of grade and soils. So just to recap, we received a completed application on the 10th of February and completed a staff review. A recommendation was presented to the planning advisory committee on the 22nd of May, and a positive recommendation was forwarded to the full municipal council at first reading on the June 3rd, where a public hearing was authorized. Following this evening's meeting, a second reading will occur, where municipal council will vote and make a decision on the application, and following that decision, there is a 14-day appeal period. So, back to you, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Bowman. Just to explain to the public once again, council sits as a quasi-judicial capacity for public hearings, and so it does not engage in debate and doesn't argue with the presenter. It is necessary, however, that everyone has a good sense of what's being presented as we go to questions for clarification. So if there's any misunderstandings of any part from any councillor, so at this time, I would ask if there's any questions of clarification by any councillor to the presenter. Councillor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. Just for clarity, Ms Bowen, is there any sidewalks near the facility in question? Are they, is it?
Yes, through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Gates, there is a sidewalk on the opposite side, the northern side of the road.
Anyone else? Okay, so at this time, we'll go to members of the public. So if there's any members of the public who would wish to address council on this matter, please come to the mic and state your name and address for the record. And as a reminder, you have a five-minute maximum time limit per speaker. Please address your comments to council and not to presenter. Going once, going twice, third time gone. Okay, well, that's great. Well, thank you very much, Ms Bowman. And now we will move on to the second item on the agenda, which is an application to rezone property at Highway 221 Centreville. This will be presented by our municipal planner, Alice Jacob. Alice, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this application is again for a land use bylaw map amendment to rezone, sorry, rezone awakened parcel located on Highway 221 Centerville. This is the standard process we follow for a rezoning application. So, once we receive the complete application, the first step is to organize, usually organize a public information meeting. This meeting allows us to gather public feedback and concerns regarding the application. And following the public information meeting, staff will begin reviewing the application. We take into consideration the comments received from the public, and we also review the application against the applicable policies, and we reach out to the relevant departments for their feedback on the application. And the staff report is then prepared, which is presented to the Planning Advisory Committee for their recommendation. If Planning Advisory Committee makes a positive recommendation to council, council gives the application a first reading, and council usually forwards it to a public hearing. Public hearing is held by council to gather feedback from the community on the particular, on that particular application. And following the public hearing, the application returns to council for a second reading, at which point, council will make a decision on the application, and the application enters a 14-day appeal period. So, County of Kings map, the red circle on the map is the approximate location of the property within the growth centre of Centerville. And this is the subject property, which is approximately 2.5 acres. Access to the property is from Highway 221. The property has two frontages on the highway. There are no existing structures on the property. The property is weakened. The neighbouring uses, most of the neighbouring properties are developed with, primarily with residential uses. There are agricultural uses to the north. So, the proposal is to develop a multi-unit dwelling containing four units on the subject property. The property is currently located within the residential one- and two-unit zone, or the R2 zone, and the R2 zone permits building forms like one-unit dwellings, two-unit dwellings, semi-detached group dwellings, but it does not permit a multi-unit dwelling type. So, the proposal is to rezone the subject property to the residential mixed-density R3 zone to permit the proposed development. This is the land use designation, future land use designation map. This is the subject property, and the neighbouring properties are all within the residential designation. The residential designation is primarily meant for residential uses, and we have the agricultural designation, which is meant for agricultural uses to the north. So, the residential designation permits a variety of zones, and this is the zoning of the current zoning of the area. The subject property is currently within the residential one- and two-unit zone, and the majority of the neighbouring properties are within the same zone. The residential one- and two-unit zone permits uses, like, residential uses like one units, one-unit dwelling, two-unit dwelling, semi-detached dwelling, and group dwellings, and it also permits a few non-residential uses. We also have the residential R1, one-unit zone, which permits one-unit dwellings and secondary suites, and it also permits a few non-residential uses. And then, we have the A1 zone to the north, which permits a variety of agricultural uses and complementary uses. We also have in our three-zone property here, which is the residential mixed-density zone, which is the proposed zone for the subject property. And we have the hydrologic features map. So, the property has a water course on the eastern portion. So, this, this is just a graphical representation of the water course. The actual location of the water course could be further east or further west on the eastern portion. The location will be confirmed by a location certificate that is required at the time of permitting. The property also has an ESA overlay, so these hatched portions on the property are the ESA overlay. The ESA overlay is usually applied to areas that are prone to flooding or areas that have a steep slope. So, in this case, other than the, except for this ESA, which almost follows the course of the water, water course, the remaining ESA within the yellow portions are applied because of steep slope on the property, and this is the only ESA that is applied because of flooding. So, it is important to note that the ESA overlay does not restrict development. So, if the applicant intends to build something on this portion of the property where the ESA is applied, they could build it on that portion. The only, the only thing is that there are additional requirements within the ESA overlay. So, the, any new building will have to be designed and constructed to address the unique site feature, which in this case is steep slope, and the, it has to be designed by a licensed engineer. So, again, the ESA does not restrict development. They could build on the ESA, it's just that there is an additional engineering review requirement on that portion. It also appears that this portion has a wetland, so the, we, we do not know what the extent of the wetland is. Only a wetland delineator could identify the extent of the wetland, and this will again be looked at during the permitting stage. There also appears to be a drainage ditch on the property, which appears to drain into the water course on the eastern portion of the property. So, these are some of the, so these are the neighbouring properties to the north, which is within the A1 zone across Highway 221. The, these, this area is developed with residential uses and also agricultural uses. And this is a view of the northwestern portion of the property, which is relatively flat, and it is almost the same level as the road. And these are views of the western portion of the property and the neighbouring property to the west. So, this is the existing drainage ditch on the property, and behind all these trees, there is the neighbouring dwelling to the west. And these are the neighbouring properties and dwellings, which is located on this portion of the map. This is the southwest, southwestern portion of the property, which is the proposed area for development, and we have the neighbouring property to the south here. So, as we can see here, this area slopes down to this drainage ditch. And this area is the central portion of the property, and this is the eastern portion of the property where there is the water course and the wetland. So, a public information meeting was held for this application on the 5th of February. There were, there were a few concerns that we received during the meeting and after the meeting. There were concerns regarding drainage, so neighbours were concerned that the proposed development would affect the neighbourhood drainage. So, the properties to the north and, neighbours mentioned that the properties to the north and south are currently draining into the ditch on the subject property. So, to understand this better, I went for a second site visit. It seems like the, so this property to the south and properties or lands on, lands on this portion are on a higher elevation, and it is potentially draining into the ditch on the subject property. And there is also, the ditch connects to the property across Highway 221 through a culvert under the road, indicating that there is potentially drainage from properties to the north into the ditch. It is not clear when or who created the ditch on the subject property. We reviewed the property records, and we did not find any easements that requires the property owner to maintain the drainage ditch, and we also did not find any, any easements that allows the, that allow the neighbouring properties to drain into the ditch, meaning the neighbouring properties are potentially illegally draining into the ditch on the subject property. And the municipality does not regulate the ditch, nor does Nova Scotia Environment, but the property owner intends to maintain the drainage ditch, and if the owner intends to, if the, sorry about that, if the owner intends to develop a new multi-unit dwelling on the property, they would be subject to our municipal stormwater management policy, and they would be required, as per the policy, they would be required to submit a stormwater management plan, and the stormwater management plan will have to show that the post-development flow does not exceed the pre-development flow on the property, meaning the development shouldn't contribute to any additional drainage issues. The existing drainage situation will have to be maintained. And the department, Nova Scotia, no, sorry, Nova Scotia Department of Public Works also indicated that they will be reviewing the site plan and drainage plan at the time of permitting. There were also concerns about how the construction will affect the neighbour's well, well-water quality, and concerns regarding well-water capacity in the area. Wells are not regulated by municipality, it is not within our jurisdiction. Nova Scotia Environment and Climate Change is the, the provincial body, is the one responsible for regulating wells. So, the onus is on the property owner to make sure that the well, any well on the property or any construction would follow the applicable regulations, provincial regulations. And there were concerns that the development would contribute to potential increase in traffic because of the possibility of home-based businesses. So, it is important to note that the rezoning does not impact, have an impact on the number of units that could be developed on the property. The rezoning only enables additional building forms on the property. It does not have an impact on the number of units. So, the same number of units could be developed, and the same number of home-based businesses could be had on the property with the current zoning. So, regarding potential for traffic and regarding the adequacy of road networks and traffic hazards and congestion, we reached out to the Department of, Nova Scotia Department of Public Works, and they did not indicate any concerns. They mentioned that the, that there is adequate road network to support the development. There were also concerns that the rezoning would impact the sewer system. So, as I mentioned, the rezoning does not have an impact on the density, that is, the number of units that could be developed on the property. It only enables additional building forms. So, before construct, constructing anything on the property, the property owner will have to apply for necessary sewer permits to connect to the municipal sewer, and the engineering department will review the application at that time. And then, there were concerns about tree removal and erosion, concerns that the removal of trees from the property could contribute to erosion. Trees on the property could be removed even without the rezoning. The rezoning has no impact on tree removal. As for erosion, the property owner will be required to follow the provincial soil erosion and sedimentation control guidelines during construction. There were, the neighbours were also concerned that the development would impact the view from their backyards, and that the rental units were less likely to be maintained compared to owner-occupied units. The land use bylaw, again, has no specific requirements for privacy or maintenance. We have the certain setback requirements that the applicant will be required to follow. And there were about, questions about the design and ownership. Again, the land use bylaw does not control the design of a building, and the municipality does not regulate the ownership of the units. There were also misconceptions about the ESA overlay. People were under the impression that the ESA overlay restricts development, which is not the case. As I explained earlier, the ESA does not restrict development. The ESA has additional engineering requirements, and it does not prevent any development, it does not restrict development on the portions where the ESA applies. So, bringing back the ESA map here, as I explained earlier, this ESA, which almost follows the course of the water course, is the only ESA that is applied because of the flood, because of flooding. The remaining ESA on the property is there because of the steep slope on the property. So, any construction on this portion of the property will require additional engineering review requirements. Moving on to policy, this is the policy that enables council to consider this rezoning. It enables council to consider rezoning land from one zone enabled in a designation to another enabled within the same designation. So, the property is currently within the residential designation, and these are the various zones that are enabled within the residential designation. And criterion A directs us to policy 3.1.2, which is this policy. Both the residential one- and two-unit zone, which is the current zoning of the property, and the proposed zone, residential mixed-density zone, are permitted within policy 3.1.2. As a result, council is able to consider this rezoning. And this is an additional policy that applies to, that we consider for all rezoning application, applications. Criterion A of the policy, council has to be satisfied that it would be appropriate to place the proposed zone on the subject property, that is, if the intent of the proposed zone is met through this rezoning. And this is the intent of the proposed zone, which states, "Lands located in the zone are intended to provide a transition between areas of low and high density or, or on properties that would benefit from flexible development options, including a diversity of building forms." This zone is intended to include residential units in a variety of building types, at a density consistent with the residential one, one-unit R1 and residential one- and two-unit R2 zones. It is staff's opinion that the property would benefit from flexible development options, which is offered by the R3 zone, because of the existing constraints that might limit development potential on the property. So, the, as for the constraints, bringing back the hydrologic features map, as I mentioned earlier, the property has a water course, and the land use bylaw requires all permitted structures to maintain a 50-feet separation distance between the water, from the water course. So, this grey area we see next to the water course is the 50-foot separation distance. So, they cannot construct anything within that 50-foot separation distance. And as I mentioned earlier, there appears to be a wetland on this portion, and land, and according to the land use bylaw, wetlands are also classified as water courses, which means that depending on the extent of the wetland, they would have to maintain a 50-foot separation distance from the wetland as well. And then, there is also the drainage ditch on the property. The applicant is not required to maintain the drainage ditch, but the applicant intends to maintain the drainage ditch. So, these, the presence of these features could potentially limit the development potential on the property. So, it is staff's opinion that the flexibility offered by the R3 zone would be appropriate for this property. for this property. And criterion B of the policy, council has to be satisfied that the impact of the specific development proposal and other permitted uses within the proposed zone are acceptable. So with regards to the uses permitted and the impacts, both the residential one and two unit zone, which is the current zoning of the property, and the proposed residential mixed density zone, both zones permit the same types of non-residential uses. So there are no concerns with regards to non-residential uses. With regards to residential uses, both zones permit one unit dwellings, two unit dwellings, semi-detached and group dwellings. So additionally, the residential mixed density zone, which is a proposed zoning for the property, permits uses like residential facilities, townhouses and multi-unit dwelling types. This does not mean that they could have more number of units through the rezoning. It just means that they could have additional building forms in which the units could be accommodated. The reason that the applicant wants to build a multi-unit dwelling is because, is because they believe that if they contain all four units within a multi-unit dwelling, it would help them save construction costs, construction-related costs. So these models were developed based on the actual site measurements. It does not show the topography or the slopes, existing slope on the property or, and it does not show the wetland on the property because we do not know what the extent of the wetland is. So the units that we see here are 800 square feet units. And this is the water course on the subject property and this is the existing drainage ditch. These are all just graphical representation. As I said, the location of the water course could be, could probably be a bit further to the east or further to the west. That will be confirmed at the time of permitting. So this line that we see on the model is the 50 foot separation distance. So they cannot build anything within that, within that 50 foot, 50 feet separation distance. And it remains the same regardless of the zoning. So this is the current zoning of the property and this is the proposed zoning of the property. In, within, so with the current zoning, the property owners, property owner could develop a group dwelling on the property. And all four proposed units could be developed through this group dwelling. So they could have a group of four single units dwelling currently on the property and they could have it as of right. So in order to do that, all they have to do is apply for the necessary permits and they could proceed with the construction. Nothing would stop them from doing this on the property currently. The reason for the rezoning is, as I mentioned earlier, is because they want to contain all four units within the multi-unit. So this is an option that could be developed with the rezoning. Again, other options, they could have, with the current zoning, they could have two or more duplexes on the property. And with the rezoning, they could have all four units or more than four units within the multi-unit dwelling. Again, repeating this, the reason for rezoning is to enable additional building form, building forms. The rezoning does not impact the density, that is, the number of units that could be developed on a given area. So this table compares the requirements for both cases. This is the requirement for group dwelling within the R2 and the requirement for multi-unit dwelling within the R3, the proposed zone. We, as we see here, the area requirement is the same for both cases, which is 2,000 square feet of lot area per unit, which means that there is no change in the number of units or no change in the density that would happen as a result of the rezoning. And the frontage requirement in both cases are the same. The front and rear setback requirements are the same. With regards to side setback, the proposed zone has a higher side setback requirement, which is 10 feet. With regards to height, the group dwelling could go up to a height of 35 feet and the multi-unit could go only up to a height of 35 feet. There is no change in the height, maximum height permitted. Emanity spaces, the group dwellings are not required to have amenity spaces, but multi-unit dwellings with more than five units are required to have amenity spaces. Solid waste storage space, group dwellings are not required to have solid waste storage space. Multi-unit dwellings require a separate solid waste storage space. And parking, group dwellings, one parking space per unit. If the multi-unit dwelling has six or more units, there is additional parking requirement. So the requirements, as we can see here, are largely similar for both cases, that is, group dwellings within the R2 and multi-unit dwelling within the proposed R3 zone. The rezoning does not impact the density or the number of units that could be developed on the property. So it is staff's opinion that the proposal and the other permitted uses within the zone are appropriate and reasonable. And finally, criterion C, council has to be satisfied that the proposal meets our general criteria. And this is our general criteria. The application was reviewed against the applicable, applicable criteria. It was found to be consistent with the intent of the municipal planning strategy. The application does not conflict with any municipal or provincial programs, bylaws or regulations. We do not expect any financial impact as a result of the proposal. The proposed residential use will be compatible with the surrounding residential uses. With regards to adequacy of schools and adequacy and proximity to schools, there are schools and recreation and community facilities within proximity to support the proposal. With regards to traffic hazards and congestion, we reached out to Nova Scotia Department of Public Works, which is the body that has jurisdiction over the matter, and they did not indicate any concerns. We also reached out to the Kentville Fire Department and they confirmed the adequacy of fire protection services and equipment for the development. And the adequacy of sewer, we contacted the municipal, staff contacted the municipal engineering department and they mentioned that there is access to sewer on Highway 221. And the property will have to be serviced by well water. There is no municipal water in the area. As I mentioned earlier, well water is regulated by Nova Scotia Environment and Climate Change and the property owner will have to meet their requirements. The potential for flooding or serious drainage problems, the applicant, if the proposal is for a multi-unit dwelling or townhouses or group dwellings, the applicant will be required to submit a stormwater management plan at the time of permitting. And the stormwater management plan will have to show that the post-development flow does not exceed the pre-development flow, that is, the existing drainage conditions are not altered because of the, additional drainage is not contributed by the proposed development. They will have to show that. And the potential for soil erosion and siltation of water courses, again, the applicant will be required to follow the provincial soil erosion and sedimentation control guidelines during construction. We did reach out to Nova Scotia Department, Nova Scotia Environment and Climate Change regarding the proposal. We asked if they have any concerns with regards to the proposal because of the proximity to water courses. They did not, they did not comment on that. They mentioned that the application, that the proposal will have to follow the required regulations with regards to wetland alteration or water course alteration or any other applicable regulations. And with regards to negative impacts on nearby wetlands, the applicant will be required to maintain the 50 foot separation distance from all water courses on the property and they will be required to follow any other applicable provincial guidelines. Wetlands are regulated by Nova Scotia Environment and Climate Change, which is a provincial body, and they will have to follow the applicable regulations. And with regards to site suitability, there are no concerns. As I mentioned, the applicant will be required to follow the applicable municipal and provincial policies and guidelines, sorry, sorry, regulations. And back to the process, we received this application in November last year and a public information meeting was held on the 5th of February at the Centerville Community Hall. Staff reviewed the application and we prepared a report, which was presented to the Planning Advisory Committee on the 22nd of May. And Planning Advisory Committee, through majority vote, forwarded the application to council for first reading. And council gave this application first reading on the 3rd of June. We are currently at the public hearing. Following the public hearing, the application will return to council for first reading. The public hearing and the second reading happens on the same night, that is, tonight. And after the second reading, the, and at the second reading, council will make a decision and the application will move on to a 14-day appeal period. So to conclude, the application is to rezone the property from the residential one and two unit zone to the residential mixed density R3 zone. And this is to enable, enable the development of a proposed four unit dwelling. The rezoning does not have an impact on the density. It does not change the number of units that could be developed on the property. The rezoning only permits additional building forms on the property like multi-unit dwellings and townhouses. The applicant could currently develop the proposed four units on the property through group dwellings without going through this rezoning. The reason that they want to develop a multi-unit dwelling is because they believe it would help them save construction-related costs. So if the rezoning is approved by council, the applicant will be required to apply for the necessary permits, which is the next stage. This, right, right now, tonight, we are here just for the rezoning process, which is to rezone the property from one zone to the other. We are not approving the building or we are not approving any other building plans or anything. It's just to rezone the property. So the other, the rest of the process and the permits will be, rest of the review will be dealt, dealt with at the time of permitting. And that concludes the presentation. I pass it back to the chair for comments from public.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob. And at this time, I'd like to welcome councillor Emily Lutes, who was away, and welcome her to, to the meeting. I will have to say, councillor Lutes, that I cannot permit you to vote on these two rezoning items when we get to council because you've joined us in progress. However, we will welcome your full participation in the rest of the council meeting that follows this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So now, if there's any points of, questions of clarification by council, councillor MacPherson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you. First of all, thank you for the presentation, very detailed and thorough. It's very much appreciated. Do you mind going back to just the back, maybe half dozen slides or show where it shows that drainage ditch in green, the green line? A little bit further back than that. Yeah, that won't work. Thank you. So I had the opportunity to walk on the property and what I'm looking for a clarification is, is there not another drainage ditch coming from the west end, lower down, basically coming from the cul-de-sac from Morris Lane that is accessing the gorge and the natural plain of where the water would go? Is there another drainage ditch that we're not seeing on this map potentially?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor MacPherson. So when I went for the second site visit, this drainage ditch was like visible, like, like there on the property, but I tried to look for a drainage ditch on this portion. There was, there were no clearly defined drainage ditches there. I could see like water traveling through channels down to the drainage ditch, but nothing that is clearly defined, like clearly visible.
Thank you, thank you for that. So my understanding is that this area, the subdivision and Morris Lane in particular are prone to flooding. And we talked in your presentation about potential illegal drainage happening. And I'm trying to understand that, I suspect that's happening because the water has to go somewhere and the waters, my question is, would it not make sense for the water from the subdivision and Morris Lane to take the natural low point and to be headed for those gorges that are on that property? Is that how water would flow? Would we not anticipate that any flooded lands would flow down into those gorges, which are the low-lying points within the property? Just, just seeking clarification on that.
I think I'm trying to understand that question. I understand that water would flow from higher to lower elevation, but I'm going to direct that question to my director, who might be able to answer that better.
Thank you, through the mayor, to the councillor. The issue that we're going to have is, yes, you've hit it exactly, water flows in its easiest route. The issue that we have at, I guess, at two different levels, today we're at a planning level and then there's also the permitting level. But at a municipal level, the issue is, is that legal drainage, and we consider legal drainage be one of two things. One, there's an easement permitting that drainage to occur, or it's naturally occurring and meets the definition of a water course. Those are our options.
Thank you for that. And I appreciate that answer. My purpose in questioning that was a term illegal. I don't think waterways themselves care if it's legal or illegal. They're going to take their natural course of the low-lying part and that water from Morris Lane is going to drain. My final question of clarification is around actually the building permit phase, which is later to come. So you mentioned a few times in the presentation that there are different potentials of what could happen here. There could be a four-unit building put there. There could be a number of duplexes or single unit dwellings because it's currently residential two. But really, we don't know what can go there until we get to the permit phase and someone goes in to analyze what the land looks like. And we may be surprised that that piece of land, in fact, can only accommodate one duplex or one single dwelling. So we don't really know. Is that accurate?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's right, councillor MacPherson. We don't know how many units the property could accommodate. There are a lot of constraints, as I said. It could only be, we could only know when we receive a site plan or like a layout, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Best.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you go back to the screen there that we have the four, two different buildings? Right there, that's perfect. So on the left there, they could build it right now with no questions. They don't even have to commit a rezon. So all they're doing is putting four together. No more houses on this, this area, just strictly four. But they only want to put them together. Is that what I understand? To try to save money?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Best. The proposal is for four units, yes, but they could have more than four units, like. So in the R2 and the R3, as I, as I, as I explained earlier, the area requirement is 2,000 square feet per unit. So the number of units will be based on that. They could potentially have more than four, but we don't know because there are constraints on the property.
Thank you.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got the answer to my question. My question was, can they build more than a four-unit building? And I guess they can. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor Packford.
Thank you, through you. I'll try to phrase this in a way that I can also understand. When it comes to drainage, if there's no set easement for drainage, is the onus on this property owner to continue to take water from other properties? Or is their drainage plan, when they go for a building permit, only about mitigating water from their own property or counting in the drainage from other lots that aren't registered as easements right now?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Packford. If they, if the proposal is for a group dwelling, which they could have with the current zoning, or if the proposal is for a new multi-unit or townhouse, they would have to submit the drainage plan, the stormwater management plan. So they could, there is nothing stopping them from filling up the drainage ditch on the property, but at the time of the permit, at the time of permitting, when they submit the
At the time of permitting, when they submit the stormwater management plan, they would have to show that the post-development flow does not exceed the pre-development flow, which means that the existing drainage condition on the property will have to be maintained. And the development, whatever development is built on the property, shouldn't contribute to additional drainage issues. So, they could, like, fill up the drainage ditch, and they could, like, alternately have a retention pond on the property that could take in the water. So, it depends how they manage it.
Deputy Mayor.
Sorry, just one follow-up. Thank you, Mayor. I guess, so just for clarification, their development plan will take into effect how their new buildings will affect said lot and the current water flow that's going on to it. If another development was to happen on, what was it, Morris Lane there, would their new development have to be able to take on said water that's coming from that lane currently, as that may grow? I know that area floods. I'm just wondering, when they go to put a package together to petition for a billing and permitting, if they just need to take into consideration all the water from other low, higher properties that are now currently going through it? Or are they just focused on their one lot, and how their development will affect their lot? Yes, if that might make any sense. Sorry for the confusing question.
It does. It's got, like, a lot of things within that, so I'm trying to understand or simplify the question, I'm guessing. So, are you asking if there is, like, new developments on Morris Lane? Is that the direction you're going, or...
I guess more so just... Thank you, Mayor. I guess more so just wondering that this development, when they put their package together to potentially do these developments, if their drainage plan is going to take into consideration other lots that are now currently feeding into their property, or they just have to focus on their said lot and their water retention, and how it will be impacted by this development?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Packford. So, they would have to consider drainage from other lots as well, because that is the existing condition right now. Other lots are draining into the property, and they would have to take that into consideration. And the stormwater management would have to address that as well, because that is the existing condition. And anything beyond that existing condition would have to be managed by new stormwater management techniques or something.
Yeah.
Does that answer?
Yes, it does. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Ms. Jacob. And now, we'll move on to the public. If there's any members of the public that would like to address council on this matter, we would ask you to come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record. As a reminder, there is a five-minute maximum time limit, and please address your comments to council and not to the presenter.
Hi. My name is Lynette Morris. I did send in a presentation to go up on the screen of some articles that I've done. I'm just going to present what research I've done.
And where do you live?
I actually live at the property. It's on the first slide, directly adjacent. I'm on Morris Lane.
Okay.
My property is directly beside this particular property. And...
Do we have the slide? It is open. I don't know how to project it. It's a Word document.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Okay. You'll see on Figure 1 here, the orange X shows where they're proposing the building. The green star shows where my property is, which is directly adjacent. The blue box represents the water course at the back of the property, and it's actually called the Habitat River. It does have a full name on it, and it is a recognized water course. You'll see the three arrows, the purple arrows. They've recognized the one running along the ditch leading into the water course, but they have not recognized the one off of Morris Lane. And this particular water course, or this particular ditching system, is what is maintained by the Department of Public Works. Like, they are coming out this summer to redig it, just so that they have the water drained down. It actually drains down through David Snare's property, but then connects to the ditch in this property. So, blocking off any type of that ditching, we do flood up on Morris Lane, but we are higher up, so we actually have ditching systems that drain to that particular place. And those ditches have been in place for almost 50 years. So, it is not a new ditching system that's been put in. So, I am speaking against the rezoning of the property on 221 due to environmental impacts that it's going to have on our community. You'll see by the following information that it includes the two drainage ditches and the water course. I reside on Morris Lane, as I mentioned, and it is a recognized drainage path from Morris Lane by the Department of Public Works. It's not on any maps, and as you have seen from the previous presentation, it's not being considered. We are concerned that this is going to cause a lot of flooding issues up on our property. And also, if the water cannot follow the proper drainage systems, it's going to move through the land. As you notice, my property butts up next to this one, and we do one of the things that's not seen in those pictures, because they were taken in high foliage time. But at the back of my property, it's about 100-foot drop down into the ravine. So, the property does have a very great slope. If the water starts moving through the properties, it's going to start eroding the back of my property as well, because the more water that pushes through the land, the more water that's going to erode the back of it. That's why the ditching systems are in place. If you look at the next picture, I received something from the Department of Public, or the Department of Environment and John Lour's municipal office. I did speak to Andrew Thorne, who is the Environment Compliance Officer for Centerville. He works for Environment and Climate Change. He said the only question he was ever posed about this property was from the applicant, and it was whether or not there was a water course. He told me he did not speak to the advisory committee whatsoever. He did state that we are currently sitting on a water shelf. And you will see from the blue picture in front of you, that is the water shelf. The X is where the proposed property is supposed to be. Now, according to the Department of Environment, the province doesn't recognize the term ESA land. That is a term coined by the municipality. And it is based on the following definition, which is on the next page. If you can peek at the next one. And this talks about how the overlay is applied to any lands that were not previously located within an O1 constraint zone identified before the 2012 ARG mapping. And what it does is it's in place for any places that are known in growth centers that are prone to flooding, and it is to fix erosion, sedimentation, and flooding that could occur in those areas. With our particular area, again, we have all three concerns. We do have a lot of flooding in that area. We sit on a water shelf. We are concerned about erosion. As you affect the property or the change of the property, water will move through the land, and it can cause erosion off the backside. And we do worry about sedimentation. Currently, if we get a good rainstorm, our wells turn brown, because they are shallow wells or wells sitting on a water table. We know development is going to affect our wells for the entire time of development. We probably aren't going to be able to use our water. We understand that people can build on these properties, but at the same time, the larger the property, the more effect it's going to have on us. Currently, sorry, after speaking to the Inspection Compliance Officer, again, they stated that they are a reactionary department. They are not a preventionary department. So, unfortunately, they do not have any effect on the rezoning of a property or on the actual bylaws that they enforce on a property. Those are enforced by the municipality only. So, Figure 2, I think it's... If you went back to Figure 2, it shows that we are on a water table, which, according to the municipality's definition, puts us on ESA land. I did bring up the fact that we're on ESA land at the community meeting, and I was told that the only ESA is the overlie, which actually sits on the water course. But if you look at the next two figures, when I actually bought my property, I was issued building permits from this municipality office for the plumbing and the deck in my house, and it states that I am on ESA land. So, my house is not in the ravine. My house is actually on the land. And those permits strictly state that my property is sitting on an ESA land. So, those were the permits that I had. The next page is the one that I actually found recently and was very concerned about. Figures 7 and 8 show the water course as we were talking, and it is called the Habitat River. It is not just a water course. It is actual river. And in the next section in Figure 8, it talks about water courses. So, one of the things that I looked at, because this is the first time I had seen this, the amendment is, just so you know, based on properties with a water course, they're supposed to fall under E1O constraint lands, which is a Section D, or, sorry, E. It states that it requires that it falls under an E1O constraint zone. That actually makes it have much larger setbacks versus what the R3 zone setbacks are. If you look at Permit A, they mentioned that it was 50 feet from the water course. It strictly states right there that it is at least 50 feet from the edge of the bank of the water course. And remember, this has a 100-foot drop. So, actually, when you look at that, it reduces the property size greatly, because there is to be no change to the grade of a property that is on an E1O constraint.
Okay. I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, Mrs. Morris.
Absolutely. And I'm sorry, I made the presentation based on 10 minutes, because that's what it says online, and I wasn't told till today that it was only 85.
Well, we're going to have to fix that, because it's only five.
Yeah.
Because it's only five. But I've let you go over already.
So, just to... I will wrap it up really quickly.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know that I went out and walked the property and measured the property, and because I'm right next to it, it's walking on my property line or David's property line. And if you go by the setbacks, the building space is only 106 by 105 feet. In order for him to put 4-unit building on it, he needs 150 feet. And unfortunately, that's why I'm saying we shouldn't even rezone a property, that there's no way the property can even fit on it. He may be able to fit a duplex, but he still has to meet all the required setbacks. And that's why he can't put two duplexes, because he needs a midsection setback. That's why he's going for a property zoning of residential 3. I will say too, my last point, because I will wrap it up, is the fact that we are having environmental climate change. You've seen what happened in Texas. We've had it happen in here in Nova Scotia. Our climate is changing. And I think we need to really put some focus on the environmental impacts, especially whenever there are impacts that have been designated by this municipality.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Anna Spooner. Do I have to state where I live?
Yes.
Grand Prairie. I'm... I would... This is all new to me, what you're doing with this particular community. And I'm just interested in the issue of the wells. When you have an individual dwelling, residential dwelling, you have to drill one well for it. If you have a duplex, do you drill two wells? Or do they share a well?
It's altogether different. Some duplexes, each unit have a well, and sometimes they drill one well, and then it's not necessarily a duplex, but the duplex does share one well. I own a duplex in Colebrook, and it's one well for two units.
So, with a fourplex, it would probably be one well drawing for four units?
Possibly.
Yeah.
Centerville has, in the past, has a history of a lot of water, so sometimes it's a situation they can drill a 6-inch well or a larger well, but...
Okay. And so, if it's R3, this person might be able to build more than four units?
Kind of sounds like it's possible that they might be able to build more units, yes.
All right. So, the properties surrounding the other well users in that community, if their wells are then disturbed to such an extent that, for example, they might have to drill deeper, they won't be able to use jet pumps, because it goes below 27 feet. You can't draw water deeper than 27 feet with a jet pump. It defies the laws of physics. And so, you have to put a submersible pump down your well. Those expenses, then, are all the property owner's expenses? There's no funding to help them deal with that sort of water issue? That's not their fault?
I'm not here to debate you.
Oh, no, I'm just asking.
If that was the premise, we wouldn't be drilling any other wells in Kings County, because it might affect somebody else.
No. One individual property, one individual residence lot built there won't affect, like, permanently, but having multiple units might. And I'm just wondering, who ends up... The consequences for the residences around, that's all. The expense, who has to pay for drilling a deeper well or putting in a submersible pump? That's the individual residents that are around that development. I'm just asking a question.
Thank you. We'll get our Director of Planning here. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, the issues with wells are outside the jurisdiction of the municipality. So, most of our communities in Kings County, all the units within them are private wells. Everybody in Colebrook, private wells. Town of Burwick, every single use in the Town of Burwick, single wells. So, it's a very common issue, and Department of Environment is the body that would be looking into those issues and would be the jurisdiction that a property owner would go to if there happens to be an issue in the future.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I think at this time, I will now call for a motion to adjourn this public meeting. Moved by Deputy Mayor Packford, seconded by Counselor Best. All those in favor, please put your light on, except for Counselor Lutz. Are you in favor or against adjournment?
I'm in favor.
Okay. We're not doing the light system? No. All right. Raise your hand, all those in favor. Motion carried. Okay. Great. So, now, we all move on to the council meeting. And I would like to welcome all the people in the audience, and a special welcome to our MLA, Julie Van Aksom. Julie comes to a lot of our meetings, and we appreciate the time she does do that. We know that she's a very busy lady. Okay. So, I'm going to call for a roll call, and we have all of our council here, with the exception of Counselor Hiltz. Robbie sends his regrets for medical reasons, and thankfully, now, we do have Counselor Lutz, who has joined us virtually. So, if I could have a motion, please, to excuse Counselor Hiltz's absence for medical reasons. Moved by Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor... Deputy Mayor Packford. All those in favor of the motion... Are we using the light system now? Good. Please vote in the usual manner. All those in favor or against?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. Okay. Motion carried. Now, we'll move on. We have an agenda in front of you, council. Would somebody like to move the approval of the agenda? Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Harding. All those in favor or against?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. Okay. Motion carried. Now, we'll move on. We have an agenda in front of you, council. Would somebody like to move the approval of the agenda? Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Harding. All those in favor or against? Please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Motion carried. Now, at this time, I would ask, is there any counselor that feels they would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the items that we are going to discuss this evening? No? Okay. Now, we have... We'll move on to item 4, and I think we'll... Okay, motion carried. Now, this time, I would ask, is there any counselor that feels they would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the items that we are going to discuss this evening? No? Okay, now we're, we have, we'll move on to item four. And I think we'll approve these minutes individually. I'd prefer to do it that way. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the June 3 council meeting minutes. Moved by Counselor McPherson, seconded by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion carried. Now I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to approve the June 17 special council meeting minutes. Moved by Counselor Sappington, seconded by Counselor Best. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion carried. And now for the June 23 special council meeting. Looking for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor McPherson, seconded by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Now we'll move on to business arising for the minutes. Is there any business arising from the June the 3 council minute, meaning, minutes? No? Okay. June 17 special council meeting. Is there any business arising from that meeting? Okay, we'll move on to June 23 special council meeting. Is there any business arising from that meeting? No? Okay. All right, so now we have our planning advisory committee recommendations, and I believe they're gonna be read this evening by Deputy Mayor Packford, Vice Chair of PAC. So, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. 06A, that municipal council gives second reading to the application to rezone 836 Main Street, PID 55122279, Kingston, from the general commercial C1 zone to the mixed commercial residential C3 zone, as described in Appendix C of the report dated May 22, 2025. ISO move.
Okay, we have a seconder, seconded by Counselor Best. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner. Okay, motion carried. And Counselor Lutz, are you voting for or against on that? Oh, no, you can't. Sorry, I already told you you weren't allowed. Tried to break my own rules here.
I'm glad I didn't get it wrong.
Ah.
Okay, good.
I got a good memory, but it's short. All right, application to rezone property at Highway 221, File 2418, Deputy Mayor Packford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 06B, that municipal council gives second reading to the application to rezone a vacant parcel located on Highway 221, PID 55045678. Centerville, from the residential 1 and 2 unit, R2, zone to the residential mixed density, R3 zone, as described in Appendix D of the report dated May 22, 2025. ISO move.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Moved, seconded by Counselor Gates, Counselor McPherson.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Through you, I'd like to speak to the motion, please. In particular, I'd like to speak to the intent of the land use bylaw, and in particular, the word intent. And I think that's important. We're seeing it more and more at council. And intent, for me, is a good word, because it means that we must look at interpretation. And that gives us a role as elected officials. If we didn't have the opportunity to interpret our bylaws, then we wouldn't have a purpose in being here. All we would need is manuals, and staff could look at manuals and make decisions based on policy and bylaws. But the fact that there is intent and interpretation gives us a job, and I like that. As representatives, sometimes we make challenging or difficult decisions. And those decisions sometimes must be made on common sense, and they must be made on reasonable and rational thinking. And when I look at this property on Highway 221, and I look at the environmental issues, and I look at the floodplain that it's built on, I have to say, in good faith, that if I'm following those values of being reasonable, rational, and common sense, there is no way that I can support the potential of additional or larger buildings on this site. It just doesn't make sense to me. So I'm speaking against the proposal, and looking for your support. Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have concerns about flooding issues if this development goes forward, so I'll be voting no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. See any other lights on, so I'll call for the question. So all those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner. Okay, motion defeated. Okay, we'll move on now to number 6C, application for land use bylaw text amendment. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 06C, that municipal council give first reading to and hold a public hearing regarding the amendments to the text of the land use bylaw to enable two secondary suites within a one-unit dwelling in the residential one-unit, R1 zone, and associated amendments, as described in Appendix A of the report dated June 10, 2025. ISO move.
Okay, we have a seconder, seconded by Counselor Gates. Any further discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Motion carried, with Counselor Lutz voting in the affirmative, and Counselor Gates, you voted yes. Counselor Gates voted yes, for the record. Okay, application to enter into a development agreement in Kingston, File 25-03. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 06D, that municipal council give initial consideration to hold, to and hold a public hearing regarding entering into a development agreement to legalize and permit the expansion of a professional trade on the property located at 808 Main Street, PID 55122170, Kingston, which is substantively the same, save for minor differences in form, as the draft set out in Appendix E of the report dated June 10, 2025. ISO move.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. What's wrong? She did, yeah. Yeah, you just, you can't get. Motion carried. Okay, the next public hearing is-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next public hearing is set for Tuesday, August 5, 2025, at 6:00 PM. However, I will make note that there is a motion on the agenda this evening that may affect that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And we'll move on now to Planning Services and Director Javerick.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I have before you two requests for council to consider refunds for planning applications. The two requests before us relate to text amendments that members of the public had applied to enter into the planning process, and one was successful and one was not, going through the process. So the first applicant is Anna Spooner. Her file related to a text amendment in the A5, the hamlet, historic hamlet of Grand Prairie Zone. At the time of the application, the Spooners were hoping to amend the land use bylaw to reduce the lot area and lot frontage requirements of that zone. That application began, there was a public information meeting, but following the public information that was held in this building, the applicants made the decision on their own to withdraw the text amendment. And that request for refund came to staff on May 20. The second request for a refund was from a lady named Tracy Gerhardt. She also requested a text amendment to the land use bylaw, and that text amendment was to amend the land use bylaw to permit bed and breakfast operations in a more widely permissive way. And this stems from the province's requirement that anybody doing a short-term rental be regulated through them, which required compliance letters from the municipality. The old text of the bed and breakfast, or sorry, the old test, text of the land use bylaw treated bed and breakfast operations differently than Airbnb's. So this text amendment was successful and was approved by council back in February of this year, and the Gerhardt have asked that council consider a refund. So why is council able to consider that? The fees policy gives us that opportunity. So council by motion may choose to refund all or a portion of the fees charged for a planning application. In doing so, council shall indicate the reason for not collecting, or in this case, refunding the usual fees. As way of background for council, council traditionally has had the practice of refunding those application fees on successful text amendments. So if it actually results in a change that is widespread and affects many properties, council has had a history of refunding those individuals that, I guess I got, this is subject property, but traditionally, we call it the trigger property, the property that started that conversation. So again, there were two different applications that have asked for council to consider refunds. Ms. Gerhardt, her bed and breakfast operation amendment was successful, so it does meet what staff would say would be council's traditional treatment of a refund. Ms. Spooner's is a bit of a different situation. It was a voluntary withdrawal of the application once the process had already begun. So therefore, staff are recommending two separate amendments, and there's two separate motions. The first one would be to provide a full refund in the amount of $900, which is the cost of a planning application for a text amendment, to Ms. Gerhardt, as her application was successful, benefiting all properties permitting residential uses. And then the second, it's staff recommendation, given that part of the process had been undertaken and advertising had occurred, and a public meeting did occur, that a partial refund be considered by council of 500 to Anna Spooner. So the motions before you, there are two. Municipal council issue refund to Tracy Gerhardt in the amount of $900, in accordance with Section 4.28 of Policy FIN 05003 fees.
Okay, moved by Counselor Best, seconded by Counselor McPherson. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please, oh, sorry. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Trish. The reason Anna Spooner's refund is 500, that's just the remaining part unused?
Yep, we'll do that one next.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were voting them both.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? No? All right. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Now the second one, Director Javerick.
The second motion before you is that municipal council issue a refund to Anna Spooner in the amount of $500, in accordance with Section 4.28 of Policy FIN 05003 fees. And to the counselor's point, that is staff's recommendation that a partial refund be the result of the request, but council's decision.
Okay, moved by, oh, wait. Okay, I think we'll get the motion on board. Counselor Best, seconded by Counselor Harding. Now Counselor Allen.
I was just curious what the full amount was. Was it also $900?
That's correct. It's 900 for a text amendment, in total.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Javerick. Motion carried. We'll move on to administration. Amendments to Policy CO MM-02-003 Proclamations. A motion to adopt the amended policy. Seven days' notice was given June 3. Okay, we have a mover. Moved by Counselor Gates, seconded by Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion carried. Move on to Amendment Policy FIN-05-006 Procurement Adoption. Motion to adopt the amended policy. Seven days' notice was given on June 17. Have a mover. Moved by Counselor Sappington, seconded by Counselor Harding. Anyone?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried. And the last one, 8C, to repeal policy EPW-04-010, Engineering Services Procurement repeal. Motion to repeal the policy. Seven days' notice was also given on June 17. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Gates. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, while Martin Keogh is getting set up from our engineering public works, I'm gonna call a 10-minute recess.[614.01]
When we replaced these aerators, we replaced approximately five hundred and sixty-six of these tube aerators, and these were a coarse bubbling system. The new aeration system was upgraded to a fine bubbling system. What is being done to eliminate the smell? Air blower supplying oxygen to lagoons one and two have been upgraded and reconfigured. So the older existing blowers that we had prior to two thousand twenty-five are now feeding cell one, and the newer two thousand and five blowers that we just installed are dedicated to cell two. Air blower supplying lagoons three, four, and five are tuned during the first week of June. So we brought in one of the top VFD technicians in Atlantic Canada to help us with this, and we were able to improve things dramatically, as you'll see in the coming few slides. Also added an oxygen boosting compound. That's in the influent of the treatment facility, and we installed mechanical mixers in lagoons one and two. These are the picture of the two new high-efficiency blowers. They're now in operation, and during commissioning, we obviously made some adjustments, but the last important adjustment we made was June sixteenth, and everything is running perfectly Blowers to lagoons three, four, and five are now supplying seventy percent more air, and now we're seeing dissolved oxygen increases in all of those cells, the last three. And that's due to that modification and reprogramming of the VFDs. This is just a picture of our equipment we're using for the for storage and for injecting our oxygen boosting compound. These are mechanical mixers in operation, and you may hear these referenced as Lagoon Masters, and that's just the brand name of these. More recent advice and work. Materials ordered to install an additional diffuser string in lagoon two. We're about one to two weeks out on that, and we're going to do that in-house with staff, the installation for that. We're continuing to dose oxygen boosting supplement to help to supply the oxygen and keep the oxygen in the influent. Engineer design was received for seven additional diffuser strings for lagoon one, and we're about eight weeks out, but we're attempting to expedite that. And that upgrade is will provide seventy or twenty percent more oxygen to cell one at the current airflow. Smaller screen mesh has been received for drum screens. It's intended to address the amount of solids entering lagoon one. I'm happy to say that we have been installing those this week, and we should be finished by next week, and we're already seeing a positive result there with the couple that we've installed already. We're also, the floating mats are still being removed within cell two. Just this picture of cell two, the top, I think it's the northeast corner, you can see the pool noodles. That was something that our manager of Public Works was able to pick up, and what they did there was just pull the mats into the suction line, the snorkel. He actually said he bought Numanus out of pool noodles when he purchased all those. Length of time for waste processing. Lagoon-based treatment plant retains wastewater for approximately sixty days from the time of inlet through the five-cell system to the point of affluent discharge. So each cell's a different size, so different retention time per cell. Bio solids during two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-four, more than eleven thousand metric tons was removed from the lagoons. That's not including the geo tubes that are on site, and you'll see those big black bags, or some people reference them as like look like big black socks that are on the north side of cell one. Regional produces a Class B municipal biosolids. The municipality has been measuring the buildup of biosolids with sonar technology, so we've done that in all of the cells. Desludging of lagoon two is planned for the fall. We plan that for the fall, mostly because consultants have advised us doing it in the cooler weather. It's a time of year where DO is more prevalent in the water, stays in the water, and doesn't dissipate as much, and also not during plant upset conditions. Past experience, land application could not be accommodated due to volume, capacity of licensed winrow operators. Where regional's at the size it is, it's hard to deal with the biosolids that we're pulling out of regional. Too much volume for direct land application, topping at wastewater plants, not enough area. We just don't have the land in that area with regional. Can be used as second-generation landfill operations for daily cover or cell closure, but cannot be stockpiled. But for regional, it's difficult because, again, of the volume that we're dealing with for landfills to receive that. Class B materials have stockpile restrictions. Class A and B materials have storage restrictions, some of which relate to drinking water supplies. For regional, our Numanus wellfields are very close to the property, so we have to be conscious of that, and also Nova Scotia environment would also have to be notified for approval. Other Nova Scotia municipalities are having similar experiences, and ultimately for biosolids for the smaller municipalities and ourselves, they have to be shipped to New Brunswick for disposal. Disposal will be revisited prior to the two thousand twenty-five removal, so we will go through the whole process again to see if we can find something here this year and see what we can do there. Sorry, I missed a slide there for yous. Capital costs, this is just outlines what is being spent at the regional plant. One of the common questions was exactly how much money have we spent there, and this just outlines that. You'll see the headings are the areas that we've focused that capital funding, and then at the very end, the grand total, the twelve point five million. This will continue to change as more payables are added to this. Down below in the bottom-left corner, you'll see the sludge management. It'll show what has been taken out of there, less the geo tubes. And again, the sludge management by activity, what we've taken out of there, paid for the desludging and the dredging, and then disposal, which is your tipping fees, and then the transportation to New Brunswick. Size of system. The system services residence, businesses, industry, and institutional users between Greenwich and Colebrook. Includes residential, business, and industrial within Kenful Industrial Park, retail sector of Numanus, and the Valley Regional Hospital. This is a breakdown of the partners' contributions. You'll see on the far right who's paying for how much they're paying for or looking after or responsible for, and you'll see Kenful is forty-eight percent. Numanus is in the second there, we're twenty-one point four, and then followed by us at seventeen Annual budget for regional partners, so this is this year's. We're looking at super lines, conveyance line replacement, aeration and desludging, just regional equipment upgrades, consulting, lift stations, including the wet well wizards and aeration, and the rehabilitation of four overflow chambers and UV upgrades. The bottom line is just your funding sources and where the funding is coming from. Is the system at capacity? So currently, we're at approximately fifty percent of the design flow at present day, so we're in good shape that way. It's just the load that we're receiving is causing the issue. Engineering consultants note that BOD loading is within design spec if our current monitoring has captured all the incoming BOD. The study presently underway involving installation of additional composite samplers will address confirmed system loading. Next section is system pre-design. System pre-design report. First step in pre-design study is installation of composite samplers to gather influent data. Composite samplers are budgeted for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, and consist of equipment that takes automated grab samples for analysis. Municipal staff have been working with Kenful staff on installation points within the system. This is just a picture of what a composite sampler looks like, and basically the size comparison. We have four units on order. One has been received to date. The first one will be installed at the regional plant. Installation of this equipment is authorized under the Municipal Act, meaning when we do install them in industry, we will follow the Municipal Governing Act to make those Data collection will be undertaken over an extended period of period to develop trend information, so that is very important to determine where we need to go next, gathering that data and information. Pre-design report for entire system, tendering in February two thousand twenty-five, process upgrades that are being looked into, pre-screening solutions, possible conversion to alternate technology or treatment technologies, and there's a lot of different technologies. We can't say at this point where we're going because we don't know. That's what our study's going to tell us. Post-treatment clarification or filtration, sludge management solutions, and overall treatment facility optimization. Study will encompass the type of incoming ways to project growth and development and project growth and development within the area. Influent data and receiving water regulatory requirements are key components of the study. The installation of those composite samplers and inline monitors to ensure accuracy of Progress meetings will be convened with the technical subcommittee, and this design report is scheduled to be completed in the spring of two thousand twenty-six. And I think CEO Conrad is up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a couple of items we've, Mr. Keo and myself have presented at the village commission meeting, and more recently at the town council meeting in Kenful. So this is similar information that was presented there.
All in all, I was there too.
Correct. You were there too, Mr. Mayor. My apologies. So as we, as Martin has explained, there are partners in the system. So in terms of the municipal and village partners, we've had quite a bit of success in the past, at least in my estimation, of going together with joint infrastructure applications. So for example, the conveyance line that follows the Harvest Moon Trail from in back of the Justice Center out to the plant. It's a fairly expensive install, and at that time, we got together and we said, you know, councils agreed that it would be our singular and number-one priority. So we didn't put three applications in for different things. We put one application in as our collective priority, which was, which received success, thankfully, from the province, and we appreciated that. So that's probably a model going forward, because once this pre-design report is complete, then we will know what type of cost structure we're talking about. So the best thing we can do is, of course, attract government money to lower the cost for our ratepayers. So the second thing that we're doing and have advised the partner items is we're updating the role of the technical subcommittee terms of reference, so that's underway. The next slide, I believe. Thank you, Mr. Keo.
Would that be provincial?
Provincial and federal.
Provincial, okay.
Provincial and federal.
MLB globally here.
So also, you know, obviously, the main focus of what we're doing now is the physicality, is the physical aspect of the plant. But we also have to turn our attention to, especially with a redesigned plant and a new type of system, presumably, there's work needs to be done under these categories: system ownership, governance, how we're going to finance this, and a regulatory review. So the village and the two municipal units cannot have one bylaw, but we can have mirrored bylaws, for example. So we would want to harmonize our bylaws so we all have the same thing, and we're also discussing and coming to agreement on how we would handle enforcement and prosecution services within those bylaws. So with that, I'd turn it back to Mr. Keo.
Okay. Questions?
Okay, thank you. And before we go there, I'll just suggest to council, remember, we're not here to debate with the professionals. We're here to ask questions. If you have any questions, that's what we're here for. Counselor Gates.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Question, Martin, could you, with sludge, can you tell me why we are getting sludge if the cells have been cleaned out? And the other part to that is, how much sludge is now in number two pool or cell?
Okay. Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Gates, the sludge is always going to occur, and it's always going to compile as the system is in operation. And for volume, right now, for cell two, we're set to sonar as, when they did the study, it came in and they detected forty-five hundred, so four thousand five hundred cubic meters of sludge. Not sure of the depth, because it's at bulks in different areas, so just, and there's currents within those cells.
How much would that compare to the other ones, would be your question, right?
Yeah. So if you look back at one of the slides, when we removed the previous amount, let's just a second here, in the bottom corner, that's in metric tons there, so I'm not quite sure how to make that conversion for the sludge or for bone-dried tons, or that, is it going to be removed or anything like that until we do the operation?
So, sorry. So I could probably chime in.
Thank you, Martin. Would the sludge be in the first cell, and then does it trickle down to the fifth cell?
Correct.
So we would expect the first cell and the second cell to have the most sludge?
Yes. When we did the sonar, your primary cells had the most sludge in them, which is cell one and two. And cell three is, well, actually, cell three because it hasn't been done yet. Cell one and two have already been done, so we're going back to do cell two, which is the four thousand five hundred. Cell three has, was detected just over six thousand, and cells four and five are around two thousand eight hundred each of sludge.
CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was debating whether how accurate my memory might be, but to put it in a common denominator, if we want to talk about cubic meters, I think the last contract was about twenty-two thousand cubic meters was removed.
Counselor Best.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Martin. Cell two, to me, it seems that's where the biggest problem is right now. Is that correct?
That is, through you, Mayor, to Counselor Best, that is the cell that is problematic at this moment.
And I understand we have to clean it out, and I understand that. Farmers spread manure every day, and it smells. These Numanus residents have been in fear for months. So why are we waiting for the fall because it's cooler, so it won't smell so bad? But in my opinion, we better clean them all out, every one of them, start from scratch, so we can take care of these residents in Numanus. Why do we have to wait till fall, and how much is the money? Did we get a price on that yet?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Best, we did receive a price for cell two.
Which is confidential?
At this point in time, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor, that it is, we understand it is below what we had budgeted for, but we have not signed a contract yet, so I'd be reticent to disclose that publicly.
But I really, if that's our problem, we're going to still have problems right up till cold days. So why don't we do it, fix it now, and help the residents out in Numanus? I just don't understand why we don't clean every one of them out. I know it's a lot of money, but I think the Numanus residents deserve that. Thank you.
Director Kerrigan.
My comment through you, Mr. Mayor, was actually, I put this on actually to respond to something Counselor Gates was asking about why cell two and the state it is in. One of the things to take into consideration is the, when we deslodged previously and did the aeration upgrades, we actually did the aeration upgrades in cell one last. It was the last cell to be done, and at that time, it was the last cell to be deslodged, and it then had all the aeration work being done to it. When that work was being done, we had to bypass cell one completely, and cell two, which only has a fraction of the aeration, and it became the primary cell with all the loading going into cell two, and that's why we're seeing an abundance of cell, a bunch of, abundance of sludge in cell two right now, and that's why that's our focus. To comment a little bit more on, for the, to Counselor Best, if you may, our plan is to, you know, use the budget that we have to desludge cell two, and then if there's money remaining in that budget, then to proceed with desludging of cells three, four, and five, whatever we can get done.
Thank you. Counselor Sappington, you'll get your turn. Yep.
Forgive, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Keo. I won't tell you what to do because I don't know. I'm not a scientist. I will ask, though, are floating mats caused because we didn't have enough straining? So with the new straining that we're doing, the screens, that should eliminate future floating mats, in theory? Correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Sappington, it'll definitely help, but all lagoon systems at some point will have floating mats.
Oh, okay.
It's very common. It's usually when the air gets in and the sludge is loosened up, and it obviously air, and it'll float it to the surface.
And follow-up question. So I will, full disclosure, the smell has not been constant, and so I believe my district has felt great relief. But my question is, are we able to foresee when it will be smelly? Do we have numbers that will go, oh, we're in the orange, you know, or we're getting to the red so that we can preemptively put the oxygen boosting compounds in to prevent what was happening earlier in the year? Is there a way that we could do that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Sappington, yes, with these composite samplers that we're going to be installing, it'll give us a bit of a notification that the BOD is rising, or the loading is rising coming in, and then we can make adjustments from that.
So follow-up. So right now, we don't have that. So at any point, we could be back to that unbreathable air? Is that what you're saying? Until we are able to do these testings, but we have to wait for three more of them to come and to be installed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Sappington, the one at the plant will be very helpful for us to be able to know what is coming into the cells, but we cannot control at this point the loading in the system. So if somebody or something were to happen within the system and cause a BOD spike, then that is going to make it into the system and cause issues.
Thank you.
For clarity, I think he said that the samplers that they're installing would help with that. Yes. Good question.
Great question.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor, through you, to Martin. These new pieces of equipment, the composite samplers, they catch a sample. Are they able to analyze it on-site, or do these samples have to be taken to our lab?
So those samples will, it'll grab samples throughout the twenty-four-hour period, and then staff will come and empty those samples, take those samples, and reload the machine. Yeah, and then we can do most of that testing within our own lab.
Very good. That's the answer I wanted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Best.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Martin, if we're going to clean cell two, why don't we suggest to clean all of them out to start from scratch again? And also, years ago, we used to be able to clean them out and bury them. That's not in the picture anymore. You're telling me that the environment will not let you do that anymore? Is that true?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Best, we are regulated through Department of Environment, so any of those decisions have to be put in front of them and approved. Yes.
So there's no way that we can check with environment and see if we can, we're in desperate need here, can we take, clean them out and bury it like we did years ago? Is that a possibility to talk to?
You could ask that question, but I think, I mean, we, I think last year, I mean, maybe the CEO can speak more about it, we tried this with cells one and two, and we were quickly turned around and pointed in a different direction, so to speak.
So there's no way that we can bury it for somewheres, instead of tracking? Tracking is very, very expensive.
Not unless we have a permit, or whoever is receiving that biosolids has a permit also through Department of Environment.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, and we don't want to be putting you on the spot, Martin, not in the firing line. When I heard you say that we will desludge cell number two, will that anticipate any problems for the other cells while that's ongoing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gates, I think that's why we're looking at the timing of it. Yes, obviously, we will, we can do some of that while the cell's in operation, but we will have to isolate that cell. Cell one would be the primary, and then it will cut down on our retention time or the sixty-day time that it takes to go through the facility, but it should not affect our treatment standard. It will.
Director Kerrigan.
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add into that, some of the information we've received from our consultants are, and the service providers that do this, some of this deslodging for Counselor Best, I know you're pushing to do it right away. There's always some sludge in these cells, and that's healthy because it is a biological system. You're not removing all of it. You need the sludge to react. That is part of it. But the most key thing to cell two right now, if we were to decide to let's desludge cell two tomorrow, is there's a really good chance we'd have to shut the air down to cell two, and we know by shutting that air down to cell two is only going to make the smell worse. In addition, our experience through this is it's also going to turn and stir up that cell. So by doing the work of deslodging, although a good thing, is actually going to make the smell much, much worse. That's what we've been advised on, so that's another reason why, as we said, we target that for late summer or fall, where the DOs are typically, your dissolved oxygen is actually higher, and you don't have the problem with smelling in the first place. This is a, you know, the spring is the time of year that this is always bad or normally bad, so we're trying to, for the sake of the residents, try to do this and minimize the effect or the... do this and minimize the, the, um, uh, the effect, or the, you know, the, the negative effect on, on all the residents by waiting until the fall.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you very much for a very informative, uh, presentation, Martin, and so, I'm looking for a motion to receive, Martin's, uh, move by Counselor Harding, second by Counselor Allen. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Little disappointed, Martin, you forgot that I was there, Al. Kenful. Uh, just saying. Motion carried. All right, well, moving on now to, uh, financial services, and the first one is 10A Amendment to Bylaw 93 Private Road Maintenance and Improvement Charge, second reading. We're looking for a, uh, a motion to give second reading to the bylaw. The first reading was done in June 17th. Uh, moved by Counselor McPherson, second by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion carried. Now, we have our interim Director of Finance and IT, uh, Scott McKay, who is going to present the 2025-2026 area rate levies for fire and recreation. Mr. McKay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I appreciate your time this evening. Uh, this evening, I am going to be recommending area rates for fire and recreation services to be set for the 25-26 tax year, as is done every year. And the recommendation that will be presented is that municipal council approve the levying, collection, and remittance of area rates, as shown in the July 8th, 2025 Request for Decision. For a bit of background, the municipality collects area rates for recreation organizations, fire departments, fire commissions, among other entities. These rates are established annually prior to the fall tax billing, as per the terms of finance policy, F I N 05007. Fire departments and recreation organizations must apply annually by submitting financial statements, proof of their having held a public meeting regarding the particulars of their proposed rate, and a clearly defined request of what the proposed rate to be collected by the municipality is to be set at for the upcoming year. Uh, I should note that recreation, um, is charged on a per-dwelling unit basis, and fire is, uh, uh, the fire area rate is charged as a, as a factor of the assessment value of a property, so it's a per hundred dollars of assessment. So, with respect to the various fire commissions as well, um, serving communities across Kings County, their governing legislation is the Rural District Fire Act. So, the fire commissions for which we do collect an area rate include those in Aylesford, Berwick, Canning, Greenwich, and Kingston. As per Section 46 of the Rural Fire District Act, the fire commissions notify the municipality of what to charge as an area rate, and we collect it from the served rate payers on their behalf. And under the terms of that act, the municipality is able to charge a fee for the administration of collecting an area rate, and we ask that the commissions calculate into their rate a 4% holdback that we retain as our administration fee. The fire protection rates, pardon me, or hydrant rates, are set annually based on decisions of the Nova Scotia Regulatory and Appeals Board, formerly the U A R B. So, again, the recommendation before council is that municipal council approve the levying, collection, and remittance of the area rates, as shown in the July 8th, 2025 Request for Decision. I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, we're looking for a motion, moved by Counselor Best, second by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion, motion carried. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Now, we're gonna move on to 11A Council and Committee of the Whole Meetings. Counselor Harding gave a notice of motion on June the 26th to reconsider motion. That was defeated June the 3rd council meeting. This was done in accordance with Section 37 of the foregoing Rules of Order, which also states that two-thirds majority is required to pass a motion to reconsider. This two-thirds majority of all 10 members, uh, is required, and, and, a, a, a number of votes to pass the motion is at least seven. So, first council needs to, to, to accomplish this, if that's what your wish is, council needs to pass a motion to reconsider the June 3rd motion. No debate is allowed on the motion. To reconsider in accordance with Meetings and Procedure by law, Section 38. Counselor Harding, do you wish to move a motion to reconsider?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I would.
Okay, is there a seconder? Second by Counselor McPherson. Okay, so, now, we have to vote. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Okay. Mo- motion carried. So, now, the procedure is, uh, that if the motion, uh, that we've just passed, a counselor now can move the original motion, uh, to not have counsel in the Committee of the Whole Meetings in August, uh, this year, uh, which allows another motion of similar intent, but differing from the particulars here at the discretion of the Chair. The motion can be passed by a majority of council members. So, Counselor Harding, do you wish to move that motion? Okay, is there a seconder? Second by Counselor Allen. Okay, it, now is time for debate. Uh, Counselor Harding.
Thank you. The reasons that, uh, I'm gonna give a few reasons why, uh, it's a practice to take August off for the council. Uh, as you know, August is a very busy time for counselors. Uh, the last month of the year before your children, grandchildren go back to school, that's, uh, a real busy time. Um, in the community, we have, uh, festivals and exhibitions going on in our communities. Uh, overall, a lot of us out there need a health break. Um, this gives us time to spend more time in the communities, to see, uh, talk about the issues of the county and what's going on, that's what I do in August. Um, many have booked, uh, vacations as well in August, and, and, um, I know our staff is really busy, and this gives them a little break as well, to catch up on other work, and to give them a health break as well. So, if we need to come back, if something important comes up, and we need to come back, I know we're all, we're all, we'll get there, we'll make sure we're there to represent our constituents and our council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sappington.
I am very sensitive to the fact that our hard-working staff do deserve a break, and I'm also very sensitive to, um, parents with children that are out of school. Believe me, I'm working on my new normal right now. Um, but I, you have, uh, um, I will say that I represent District Eight, where the regional sewer system is located, and the entirety of spring, it was very difficult for us to breathe, and although the smell has been better, I have to say that I still have people calling me and asking me if it is fixed, are we able to let our guard down, and I have to be honest with them, that it is not fixed, and we are working very hard, and in fact, at the annual general meet, meeting of the Village of New Minas last week, I spoke to the fact that council voted to take the month of August off, and I said it as a reassurance that the county has put it as a priority, that it is that important, that we are taking, we are not taking the month of August off, that it is a priority, and I, in case you think that I am saying this because it is my district, if it was in any other district, and a community was unable to breathe, open their windows, put their laundry out, I would still be saying that I would continue to work in August, because no community should have to live like that, and I will, I will continue to work in August. Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll be, uh, voting in favor of this motion, 'cause I feel if something urgent comes up that requires our attention, we can always, uh, call an emergency meeting. Thank you.
Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, uh, I commend the Counselor of District Eight for her representation of her constituents, and I certainly understand and acknowledge, uh, the importance of representation and what she's doing there. That said, I must say that I was, uh, very pleased by the update and presentation that was provided this evening, and it certainly made me, uh, see clearly the priority that staff and council is placing on this issue, and, uh, what I could see is, yeah, it's not rectified at this point, but there's a lot of progress happening, and we do have the option, as Counselor Allen said, of coming back i- on a needs basis if required, so, I feel that, uh, it makes sense to vote in favor.
Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as, as my former Counselor, Christina Sappington has pointed out, our area has endured the smell. Uh, this has been an ongoing situation for a long time. Uh, it's just my wish that it be a priority, that this gets addressed, and it's at the forefront of our, our concern, and that we do our best to get to the, to the end result, which is no more smell.
Okay. All those in favor or against the motion, please vote, uh, in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion carried. All right, we shall now move on to board and committee reports. Uh, number 12A Federation of Canadian Municipalities Annual Conference, uh, and, uh, there is a, a report, uh, uh, that I provided in writing to you, uh, and, uh, if there's any questions, uh, I'd be happy to try to answer. Uh, I will say one thing, uh, I feel really, really bad for Counselor Sappington, who injured herself the first day. I know she was really, really looking forward to her first, uh, FCM, and, uh, is certainly a keen person, and would have did her due diligence, and been, been at every meeting that she could possibly be at, and it was, uh, uh, I, I think she, she, she worked hard, made sure that she got the county's money back, and, and, and all that, but that's not what it's all about, but anyway, uh, uh, she did, uh, she did get to tour Parliament with Cody Blah, but, uh, Counselor Sappington, I just wanna, uh, pass that on as part of my report, that, uh, I, I was, uh, I think we all felt really bad for you. All right, if we got no questions, I'm gonna move on to, uh, interim IMSA, uh, report from Kings Transit. I also provided you with a written report there. Is there any questions? Good. Move on to the Nova Scotia Solid Waste Regional Chairs Meeting, and I also provide you with a written report there, so you didn't have to listen to me ramble on, and everybody must be getting tired. Good. So, nobody's asking me any questions? I'm gonna move on to the Police Advisory Board. This report was submitted by Counselor Sappington. Uh, do you have anything to add to that report, Counselor Sappington?
I, I, I would like to say that since that report was, um, filed, uh, we've had a major, uh, provincial police report that has been, um, put out, and so, I do foresee a lot of discussion happening in the entirety of the province.
Yes, there's a new review going on that's gonna be looking for more policing and more money. Okay, any questions to Counselor Sappington on the police report? Oh, okay, Valley Enterprise Network Liaison and Oversight Committee, uh, and they're doing lots of things, and, uh, they just had their annual general meeting, which I attended, so, any questions there? I will say that I was very impressed with the involvement from the, uh, Colonel out at, uh, out at 14 Wing Greenwood. Very impressed. All right, committees of council, are there any verbal reports from any member of council? Counselor Harding.
Um, I'd like to make a verbal report on the Regional Sewer Committee that, uh, we set on June 19th. Um, just to give you a little window of what went on, uh, we had the, um, business, I don't know, Operation of Compliance Report, we had the regional capital project update, and, uh, we talked, of course, we talked about what was going on in the sewer and, and the partners, and the working group of each partner, what they were doing, so, uh, our CAO gives the report on the, um, the, uh, the operations and the regional project update, so, is there any questions? I don't, I didn't get my minutes, so I'm just taking this from, trying to take it from memory.
Just back off there, counsel, I'll ask if there's any questions.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, thank you.
You're doing good.
Okay.
Start taking over, you got a problem. Anybody got any questions to the counselor?
I'm tired.
You're tired. All right, uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Harding, for your, uh, report, and is there any, uh, any external boards and committees? Any counselor has any report on any external boards and committees that they're on? No? Still doing good, Emily? I think she fell asleep. Okay, can we get a motion to receive all?
I'm still here, sorry.
Ah, who, we, we, we caught you going to the fridge.
Couldn't find the mute button.
Okay, all the, uh, I'd like to have a motion to, uh, receive all the report. Moved by Counselor Allen, second by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion carried. Now, we'll move on to correspondence. We did have a letter from the, uh, Canadian Post Masters and Assistance Association Maritime Branch, recandu post for your information. We also received a letter from, uh, East Alhousy Community Club, uh, thanking, it was a very nice letter, and addressed to, uh, uh, that, uh, Counselor Harding participates down there, and that was, uh, very nice, and, uh, I'm well aware, he's, uh, he's very active, just like the, the, the rest of you, and that's nice to hear. Uh, Minister of Justice, uh, the Comprehensive Policing Review, we, uh, we had a letter from there, and, uh, I even spent, uh... spent a good hour or so with the C A O, listening to that review, which is coming, so that's not only gonna be interesting, but I fear a little expensive. We'll move on. We also had a letter from the Wine Growers of Nova Scotia. They're upset that discontinued Kings Tech, some of the programs, and quite frankly, we did send a letter to the President of the Kings Tech concerned about that, but apparently has a lot to do with the less immigrants and the different courses that they're taking, that hopefully, maybe next year, they'll be able to bring that back. Anyway, I'd like to have a motion to receive the correspondence for information. Move by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor McPherson. All those in favor signify by saying aye or against. No, vote in the usual manner. I guess I'm getting tired, too.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried. Other businesses, are there any other business to come before council? Well, we'll move on then to comments from the public. At this time, we would ask any member of public that wishes to speak to come forward and address council, given their name, address, and they have a maximum two minutes. Going once, going twice, going three times. We're moving on. No, we're not having you sing today, M L A. You had your one and only chance to do that. Oh, boy, we're gonna pick somebody else next time, I'll tell you that. Your voice is better than mine, though, I'll give you credit. All right, we'll move, we need a motion to go into a closed session, and for the members of the public, we will not be coming out of the closed session back into council. So, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn this meeting into a closed session of council. Move by Counselor Harding, second by Counselor Allen. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner. All right.